I'd like to call the Select Board meeting for December 30th, 2024, to order and announce that we will be going into executive session and returning no sooner than 6:00 PM back to open session. So if I could get the last executive session motion from Pete for 2024, that would be great.
Mr. Chair, I move pursuant to master and law, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to comply with or act on the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, the open meeting law, Master and Law, Chapter 38, Section 22F, and G, to review, approve, and/or discuss the possible release of executive session, meeting minutes dated June 26, 2023.
Second. Motion in a second. Pete?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, four zero. Evening. Thank you for all being here. I'd like to call the Select Board meeting for December 30th, 2024, back into session. We started in executive session and no action was taken. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to starting this meeting. Seeing nobody, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Thank you. I'd like to begin myself with two public comments, unfortunately. Harwich has lost two pretty amazing and wonderful people in the last several weeks. In no particular order, I'd like to recognize George Sutherland. George was the brightest part of going to the transfer station, if I can say it that way. He absolutely made every trip I took memorable. And reading George's obituary was something that truly made me take pause. I had no idea. And as I say all the time, there are heroes among us everywhere. They walk among us everywhere, and we don't really know who they all are. And unfortunately, this is bringing to light the incredible life of Mr. George Sutherland. So I'd like to take a moment of silence for George, please, if we could.
Thank you very much.
And again, reluctantly, Mr. Colin Stevenson was a man that I knew, went to school with his son. Again, he was an exemplar, a human being who took, made everybody feel like family. And I, my heart goes out to his family, Jane, Colin, the rest of the family. And I'll say this, to have known Mr. Stevenson, you were better off for it. And if you didn't have the pleasure to know him, you missed out. So I would like to take a moment of silence for Mr. Colin Stevenson as well. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else with a public comment? Please.
Hi, good evening. Mark Kelleher of West Harwich. I just wondered if it would be possible at some point in the meeting or in some future point, in the rear of the packet was a $1.4 million purchase and sale agreement for a piece of property on C Street. I don't know what it was for, and maybe for the public certification, if at some point there's some explanation for that and where the money would come from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll deal with that as it comes up on the agenda. Thank you, Mark. I just mean, you have to stay here the whole time.
Good evening. Hi, John Chori, Harwichport. Just a quick question on, I've got two questions. The first one is, I know I subscribe to the announcements on the agendas in the meetings of the selectments, and I get the agendas, and I look at them when they come out, usually, you know, a week or four before the meeting. And then I read them, see if there's anything interesting for me to come and pay attention to. And then I got one today that said update to the agenda and minutes. And I looked at it, and I didn't see the difference between that one and the one I got five days ago. And I thought that in the past, if we changed something, we highlighted it so people were aware of what changed. And I just don't want, just wondering what the procedure is on that.
Thank you. For clarification, I think you meant to say the packet, not the minutes.
Well, it says update to agenda and minutes.
Okay.
And the thing I got today.
That was what?
Just the packet. The agenda was not updated.
Just the packet. Essentially, what we did is we added one more piece of information to the packet for the discussion of the width.
Okay.
As far as your next point goes, or as far as your first point of what is the process? Let me look into that for you, and I will get back to you on that in the next couple of days.
And if it's had said update to agenda, packet, or minute?
Sure.
And then highlight it so I can see what's the difference or what was added.
Thank you. Yeah, right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to go a little bit further, John, increasingly, you might have noticed that we're starting to have discussions, there are a thing or two here, or a thing or two there, is emailed to the Select Board, but it isn't in the packet at all.
That too, yeah.
Well, they're interrelated. I made a comment today, and hopefully you won't have to worry about what the identification is of the new items, because my feeling is, and I'm pretty sure everybody on this board is, that you show up at a meeting and the public packet shows everything we're going to discuss before you ever show up. So we won't have to amend them, except in extraordinary circumstances. We've gotten away from that.
Mm-hmm.
And we're not going to stay away.
Because I thought that if it was, you know, it had to be on the agenda for it to be discussed.
It was on the agenda, but it's a backup piece of material that's pertinent to the discussion. So really, there was only a part of the picture there. I asked for another part of it, and I also said at that point, please put it in the packet. And in the future, I'm pretty sure we're committed to, that's how we're going to operate in general. Anything that pertains to it that we're going to discuss, you'll see when it comes out.
Okay. Yeah, because I do read the packet a bit. And then the second question-
John, you need to get out more.
With a, with a contract that they think we could order tonight for fencing for the senior ballpark field. Do you want me to read what the question is now, or wait till it comes up?
I think we'll wait for the agenda.
Sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else with public comment?
Good evening. Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director, and it's almost that time where we start a new month, which means new programs. So I just wanted to let all of you know that we, on Thursday, January 2nd, from 5:30 to 7:30, have our pasta dinner free. You just come in, there's no reservations needed. Please stop by and enjoy. On January 7th through January 28th, we are doing RAD Kids, which is a self-defense program for children. It replaces fear and with knowledge, skills, and power. And we are working with Brewster and Harwich Police Departments. Again, you can call the Community Center for the RAD programming. Then we're working with a group that is interested in doing an adult, kind of a singles or widower dance party on January 10th. This is a free event, and they're just looking to provide some entertainment for some seniors or older individuals who may be widowed or, or single and wanting to get out. That is Friday, January 10th at 4:00 PM. Then we, backed by popular demand, the Community Center Talent Show is coming up, and we will have auditions on January 10th from 5 to 7, so stop in. We are doing more of our Betty Tremmel talks. She has traveled all over and brings beautiful presentations to the Community Center on January 16th at 2:30. Then one that might be really important to everyone, not that these others aren't, but we're doing a volunteer fair on January 23rd from 4 to 6. And we have invited organizations and clubs and departments, anyone who might have volunteer opportunities, to come in, give out information. We're inviting the public to stop by, see what things that we do have. Some are one-time events that you can volunteer for, some are ongoing. But we have had a lot of people asking how they can get involved in the town, maybe doing some of our events or things. So we're going to put together a volunteer fair with the Council on Aging, so we're excited about that. And then, of course, because you auditioned, we have the talent show on the 24th. We do have different categories, younger and older individuals, so. Senior Safety 101 on January 28th. Are we all ready for this? And then one more talk on January 30th about the Arctic with Betty Tremmel. So there is a quiz, if you take up, just kidding. Appreciate that, and hope to see you at some of our events. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else with public comment? All right, hearing none. The weekly briefing on our Phase 3 wastewater construction update?
We don't have anything in the packet because it was a holiday week. Both GHD and Robert Hour did not submit their two-week look ahead. I anticipate getting it by the end of this week, so we'll have it next Monday.
Excellent. Thank you, Megan. And we'll move to the consent agenda, item A.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes from December 9, 2024.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Three, one, and then abstention. Now we'll move to new business. So we're going to review and potentially vote to approve a conservation restriction of parcel of land on Bonny Lane, known as Block 1, shown on Plan Book 706. Page 94 is recommended by the Conservation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
By the way, they requested this to be removed from the agenda this afternoon at 2:30.
So moved.
I don't think you get to say that. I remove my second.
Sorry.
All right, thank you. What's that? Motion withdrawn.
Second is, too, by the way.
In the second. Item B. I could get a motion, please.
Vote to approve a temporary closure for, from January 2, 2025, to February 13, 2025, for Round Cove Resort Beverage LLC DBA Wacolet Resort, 2173 Route 28.
Second.
So that they will conduct cleaning, maintenance, and repairs.
For cleaning, maintenance, and repairs. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Motion to approve the 2025 Annual Entertainment License Renewal for Round Cove Resort Beverage LLC DBA Wacolet Resort, Resort, 2173 Route 28. Weekday 8:00 to 10:00 p.m., inside and outside, jukebox, radio, TV, live-recorded music, amplification, and dancing. Sunday 8:00 to 10:00 p.m., inside and outside, jukebox, radio, TV, live-recorded music, amplification, and dancing.
Before I give a, before I give a second on that, Pete, if you would agree to make the motion read 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I did speak to Wacolet today, knowing that was three, four hours earlier than last year, and they said they made a mistake on the application. They'd like one.
As amended.
I'll second that.
So the, so the motion was amended. Now we have a second on that.
For 11?
11:00 to 10:00 p.m., both weekday and Sunday.
On, on both days, correct. Thank you. Any discussion other than what we've done? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Vote to approve a 2025 Annual Class 4 All Repair License Renewal for A&amp;G Accident Repair, Inc., DBA Cranberry Collision, 161 Queen Anne Road.
Second. Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Vote to approve a 2025 Annual Common Vessel License Renewal for the Stop &amp; Shop Supermarket Company LLC DBA Starbucks Stop &amp; Shop Number 475, 111 Brewster Chatham Road.
Second. Moving seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Michael?
Amen.
Four zero. Thank you. Moving right along. Our old business.
Mr. Chair, discussion on the request for the town to maintain repair in White and Round Cove Road and Hawksnest Road, requested by Mr. Robert Freitas and Ms. Elizabeth Dubuque of 74 Hawksnest Road. Votes may be taken.
Thank you, Pete. I would just like to, before we begin this process, I'd like to make sure that the public understands that we will be sticking strictly to the agenda. All, all new comments are welcomed and will be accepted, provided that they are in line with the agenda topic as presented. So I'll open to the public first. Is there anybody who would like to say anything new? Mr. Evans? You're welcome. Thank you for being here. Always a pleasure.
My name is Tom Evans, and I'm the President of the Board of Trustees of the Volunteer Board of the Harwich Conservation Trust. And I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm going to work carefully from notes because that will keep me brief. But the, there's, we understand that there's been some confusion about our, our role, our involvement in this, and so I would like to clarify that for the record. The Harwich Conservation Trust has had a, has had an interest in preserving land in this general area of Hawksnest and the Cape Cod Commission-designated District of Critical Planning Concern. We did this most recently with town meeting support, when we acquired the Coppolis land, known as the 85-acre Great Woods property. We have had conversations over several years with Mr. Freitas about the possible purchase of his property on Round Cove Road. Several months ago, he communicated to us that he was ready to consider a sale. Because we had just taken on new and sizable projects, like the 50-acre Thatcher property and others, we served a facilitating role, introducing him to the Native Land Conservancy, a Mashpee-based land trust engaged in the same work as HCT, but without a town geographical limitation, and with a special interest in lands that were home to the people of the First Light. East Harwich is one of those special places. We made that introduction with an offer to both parties to help them reach a satisfactory agreement that would preserve the land. The resulting purchase and sale agreement is solely between Mr. Freitas as seller and the Native Land Conservancy as buyer. HCT is not a legal party to the agreement, but fully supports the goal of the agreement, which is to preserve the land that will protect the public water supply and wildlife habitat as part of the larger Hawksnest-protected assemblage. We encourage Mr. Freitas and the town to work together to find a solution regarding the dirt road improvements. Preserving land is the highest priority. It is highly unlikely this opportunity will come again, and if developed, the land will be gone forever and also increase traffic on what would likely morph into a paved road to surface, to service a new subdivision. In debate around this topic, we have heard from everyone, townspeople, neighbors, walkers, naturalists, town officials. The common drumbeat is imploring the parties to come to the table, to take the time necessary to find an agreement, and I'll stress that again, to take the time to find a necessary agreement and get it done. We at HCT support that, and will assist in any way that we reasonably can. There is no such thing as a perfect deal. I think I've heard that statement in this room even before. All the parties to this potential agreement will have made some level of investment and maybe sacrifice. Mr. Freitas may get less in the sale than he might have to a developer. The Native Land Conservancy, having already gone to work of securing a state grant, will have to invest huge time and energy in a lot of fundraising. The town will spend money on basic road improvements, but it's a relatively small amount when considering that the town is already, and commendably, investing in conservation all the time, in the care and maintenance of the magnificent Bell's Neck Preserve, in a conservation department, in Thompson's Field, in the monitoring of conservation easements and restrictions all over town, just to mention a few. So please, pull together and get this done for the common good. Thank you. I happily respond to any questions you might have.
Any other board? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else with a public? Please.
I'd just like to make two points in support. There's widespread support for the conservation land, but I do not think some of the East Harwich residents have in fact been fully brought into that process and could be brought in more. And one of the reasons I say that is because the existing road is already getting really intense traffic that it never had in the past. And that's because of Google Maps and Waze, and because of the backups at the lights in the summer, people are taking back roads and coming through. And just in the last year and a half, it's become really intense back there. And so I think that's something that should be on the table. And to that end, I've approached Julian Seer's office and asked that the roads through Hawksnest either be made seasonal or turned into biking paths, or that in fact, they be closed in some way to through traffic. And I just wanted to share that with you, because I'm just a single person, I made that very clear to Seer. But I also think that there's a conservation argument to that, there's a fire prevention argument to that with the heavy traffic, there's a safety of walkers and dogs and critters that's part of that as well. And I would really like to see restrictions on the road more than widening and more than paving, and that in some ways, that might be something that serves all as well. And certainly, the tribal investment would see that as supporting not only the water, but also the larger conservation issue. It's been years since, and it's been lost, there was a very comprehensive survey of the wildlife back there, and the document was lost. But there were rare plants, rare animals, things that should be on the state list, and that's another reason to have, roads do not help the critters. And they do bring in invasive plants. So that's the sum of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anybody else? Please. You gonna make everybody hate you again tonight? You gonna take a different approach?
I want to try to make amends. I want to be liked tonight. Dan Wolfe, I live on 94 Nathan Walker Road, and I am like on these roads like at least two or three times a day. I was there three times a day even in the rain, so I really know the neighborhood really well. What I would ask the board is if you're going to approve this, and I do hope you do, that you make sure to have a process going forward that accommodates input from the residents, input from the people who live in the neighborhood, so that it's really an open process as we sort of define what the road improvements look like. It's different, a 14-foot road is different than an 18-foot road, a 20-foot road, and the devil here is in the details. So I hope that if you approve it, you sort of approve along with it a process that allows for us to arrive at a really good place, working with the DPW. I've run into Liz a few times out on the road, walking our mutual dogs, and I really think that they want to get this done. And I think what they're asking for relative to the roads is actually, at this point, really reasonable. And I just wish we would forget the past and look at the opportunity that's in front of us, and then a process that will accommodate the neighbors as well. I feel very strongly that should the town go ahead and do this, and this is really a DPW discussion, that through signage and how the road is actually maintained and improved, we discourage the kind of use of the road that Ann was talking about, because it is a concern. And it will, there will be an ability, if it's not carefully managed, to use it as a cut-through. I don't think that's currently happening to the degree that Ann might, she and I might have a friendly disagreement about that right now. And the portion of the road that the, that the DCR is responsible for, which is between Spruce and Round Cove, is virtually impassable a lot of the year. So really, people right now are not using it that much as a cut-through from Spruce to Queen Anne, but we don't want to see people using it as sort of around the corner to avoid the four corners also. But there are ways to do that through how we manage and how we quote-unquote "improve" the road. I think in the motion, it says widen, and I will tell you that most of that road already is a dirt road, and it already is 14 feet. So I think to allay some of the fears in the room, we're not really talking about widening it, we're talking about make it a consistent width and then managing it. And also, I think the snow plowing up to Round Cove makes sense as well on Hawksnest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to share anything new? Look like you're getting ready? No, no, don't run.
I'll be quick. Ian Hoffman Terry, I live, I live on Round Cove Road, on the, on the paved section before the dirt section, and I have a little kid. I just want to express, we, my family supports this. You know, we're very concerned about traffic, but I think that, I'm confident that the town will be responsive to concerns about the neighborhood, about traffic and speed and things like that. I mean, we're out there on the road playing all the time. We're very, you know, very attuned to the traffic and, but we support this. This is just too good a deal to pass up, and I think the request is reasonable, and I think the town will be responsive to concerns about traffic, as Dan mentioned, and so we support this. And I think a lot of people in the neighborhood do, I'll let them speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else with public comment? Or public input?
Thank you. Patrick Otten, East Harwich. You know, there's, my approach is, when this happens and the road is improved or cleared or widened or smooth, I hope the town, well, let me start again. When the purchase and sale goes through and this does become conservation land, I hope the town, as a thank you, in recognition of how important conservation is, takes on, the town takes on as their responsibility to care for the roads. That would be the town's thank you. So I don't want to see this being a, you know, an argument back and forth, but let's have the town say thank you. We've done the right thing, we've got this land in conservancy, and the town, as a thank you, will say, we'll take care of the roads.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else? I would just like to say thank you to all of you, the last meeting and this meeting, who felt comfortable enough to bring in, to bring your thoughts and your information before us. It's not an easy thing, but it does not go unnoticed. So that being said, before I go to the board, I'm just going to make it clear once more time, one more time, exactly what it is that's before this board. What is before the board is to potentially, is to deliberate and then potentially vote to maintain repair and widen Seth Whitefield Road and Round Cove Road. So that's what's before the board, and I will now turn it over to board members. Don, if you're-
Yeah, I think I'm going to be replacing Dan as the guy that everybody hates. We'll see. I've bounced this around for the last couple of weeks. I mean, I understand Michael's position in this, I understand Pete's position, we shouldn't be designing roadway ourselves. So Dan's comment about processes is really important. But I'm also struck by the fact that I get haunted periodically by the perfect being the enemy of the good. And we're at a point now where we have an opportunity to do something really good, and without a lot of heavy lifting. I have talked to Lincoln about this. Everyone's right, largely Round Cove Road is 14 feet in its current state. There may be a couple of places where it's a little bit narrower, but if we commit to grading, filling in the potholes and grading it as our responsibilities as a town, and we chop off roots that are protruding into the roadway, which I know there are, because I've traveled it myself, and then also agree to flatten out and maintain and also plow in both sections, both Round Cove, the top of Hawksnest, and then leave it to a second process to how that looks at the end. In other words, get the community involved, a public hearing that's actually held by the DPW Director, that incorporates the wish lists from the people who live there, along with the Freitases, to see if we can come up with how that actually ends up looking, if it looks any different at all, from grading it and specking it out so that the Round Cove is at the 14 feet and Hawksnest is, I believe it's actually 30 in some spots, but I mean, if we can get that to some reasonable width and that it's reasonably maintained and we vote to make that our obligation, then we can have a follow-on report from the DPW Director so that he could recommend what that actually finishes out like, and what that road surface would be. I think we can get across the finish line with this, and I would support that. But as I said, everyone's got to ponder what this would look like if we had five or six 5,000-square-foot houses with swimming pools sitting there rather than a forest. 5,000-square-foot houses with swimming pools sitting there rather than a forest. This is a gem of the town, the state recognized it as such because the state actually kicked in a large portion of the money to make Hawksnest. It's not a park with park benches and picnic tables or anything, so they never designed it to be like Nickerson State Park. It was a refuge, it was a preserve. But we're not going to be preserving anything if we, everything surrounding it winds up being suburbia. So where I'm at is I'd be prepared to make a motion after I hear my colleagues, so that we're not designing the road ourselves, which we often wind up going off into the wilderness doing as a board. We're not experts on this. But if we can get, if we can get as far as agreeing to what it is we're going to do, that we're going to maintain the roads, we're going to fill in the potholes, it's the town's responsibility, and we will plow as we would any other dirt road right now, and then get a follow-on report about what, if anything, we're going to do in Hawksnest to finish that, I would support that.
Thank you, Don. Pete?
I'll defer to Michael at this point.
Thanks.
The least I could do.
Oddly, I agree with Don, except for I think that we need to have a public hearing and tell our DPW director how to build a road. The fact that it's 14 feet, I was prepared to make a motion walking in here that we wouldn't exceed 14 feet. So it would be the road that you see now, with the exception of adding a couple cutoffs. And I think our DPW director is more than capable of designing that without taking down a lot when he's working in a 14-foot perimeter. Most of the land from the paved portion past Todd Perry's house happens to be Todd's and Bob's, almost all the way to the four corners. So if everything we do is on the left-hand side of that road, we're not impacting any of the property owners. And I do appreciate, we had several more emails, the people that are concerned about traffic in the area, we certainly can deal with traffic. And if that road is passable and the police officers don't have to wash their cruisers twice a day for driving out there, patrolling it, they're more apt to drive it. And I think that based on what the motion is and how the motion is, we can instruct the administration to have a conversation with the police chief about where we're going with this and what we expect. Again, that's an employee doing their job, and I don't think that we need to continue bringing this back. T-base has been used as something that people don't want. Again, another, a follow-up email from a resident on that. I'm perfectly fine conceding on T-base. There's other material out there, but again, I would defer to our highway DPW director that knows what he's doing and just tell him he can't use T-base on that. We currently use T-base on two-thirds of Hawksnest Road and Seth Whitefield. We also use it on Bell's Neck, which goes directly to the pond. But this is a new project, so as long as, as long as the person that requests it is okay. So I think we can get this done based on a motion without having to come back and have public hearing, just by putting some stipulations in it. But if we cap it at 14 feet, which is what you're looking at now with two turnoffs and filling potholes, it really gets done, everything everybody has asked that supports taking this land for conservation. And Dan Wolfe said it best, and Don alluded to it, it will be a paved road if we don't do this. Somebody's going to buy that and they are going to get that paved at some point. So let's move on from this and make the motion, the three-tenths of a mile, I believe it is, from Round Cove paved to the corner of Hawksnest, and then the two-tenths from Raptor Road. And if I'm, if I'm reading everything correctly, we're not talking about widening Seth Whitefield Hawksnest Road anymore. That's been widened plenty. I don't think we have to add to that whatsoever. We could probably narrow that a little if we ever decided to, but it really is only widening in very few spots on Round Cove, and there may be some trees that need to come down. I did talk to a contractor today that was willing to donate as much as we want, there's a big pile of ground concrete on Queen Anne Road that they've been trying to get rid of for years. They're willing to donate that at no cost to the town. So, Don, I agree with you, with the exception of having to come back again on something that I don't think we need to.
Just to clarify, that is not what I meant. I actually talked with Lincoln about how he came to pave the first section of Round Cove. He held a public hearing at the DPW level to listen to people's various opinions so that he could come up with a design that he was willing to put forward. I don't think we should be involved in that, period, other than giving him marching orders that we're not widening the road and we're not paving the road.
And I, and I support that. And if Lincoln decides he needs that, then I would support that too, but I think that should be his decision, not ours.
And then there was one?
If you don't want to speak? I have a last. I just find it interesting that Senator Wolfe and Selectman Howell presupposed that that weren't already universally disliked before they came before us.
It's time now, should I?
You've been talking to my wife again, haven't you?
In any event, you know, I've been struggling with this since it came before us for a variety of reasons, and I continue to ask myself, you know, what are the reasons and why am I really struggling? And I agree that there's things that we can do to mitigate speed. I don't think we're going to truly mitigate traffic, because once it becomes a cut-through for certain folks, and I don't think it's going to be universal, I don't think everybody getting our Route 6 is going to, going to jump down Round Cove, down to Hawksnest. But at the same time, it will increase the amount of traffic in that road, there will be speed issues. And so I struggle with all that, but I understand there can be mitigation, you know, measures put into place. But I think what really it comes down to, and maybe I'm off-base, but since I get a vote, I get a vote, and so I go, I go with my gut. And I think the real problem I have is still that this is part of an agreement. And I don't disrespect the individuals that own the 17-plus acres. If I owned those 17-plus acres, I probably would play the same cards. But I don't own those 17 acres, and I don't like the fact that it's part of an agreement to sell the land to the conservancy. And it just doesn't sit well with me. And so for that reason alone, I would have this conversation, independent of the sale of this land to the conservancy, I'd have this conversation all day long regarding what's best for Hawksnest and Round Cove Road, but I don't like the two being intermingled. I don't like the precedence that it sets. And again, it could just be my thought process that's out there in left field, but I just don't like the two together, and that's really what's setting me off on this. And for those reasons, and primarily the reason of the two being intertwined, I plan on voting against this tonight. I do hope that if it sounds as if this may pass, that some of these measures are put into place, but tying these two together, I just, I really struggle with that, and I won't continue to repeat that, I think you understood me, but that's where I stand.
Thank you, Pete. So for me, I struggled as well. I think the term I used was, I would call the bluff and see who blinks first at the last meeting. But in, in the last week and a half that I had time to think this through and do what my wife tells me to do more often, which is remove a motion, I realized that for to keep the eye on the prize, the prize is the 17 acres of conservation, and then I reflected back and I watched the meeting multiple times to pay very, very, very close attention to the people who live out there. And the majority of people were for it, but with concerns. And those concerns were unquestionably valid. So as this process has gone and moved forward, for me, I feel this would be a very important strategic move for the town of Harwich. We don't always satisfy every resident's concerns and needs, but in this case, and in all cases, for me at least, I do my homework, and I make sure that I look at it from a town perspective. 17 acres is a lot of acreage to potentially give up. So that being said, before I put this to a vote or give the board members a little bit more, or another opportunity to discuss it, there are some, in my opinion, what I would call contingencies or some things that need to be satisfied in my mind before I think this board votes. And I would respect any of the board's input on this as well. So the first one for me is, there would be absolutely no mobilization of town resources whatsoever until we saw the closed purchase and sale, until we see that the deal has been consummated and it's actually done. That would be number one for me. Number two, I think Michael mentioned that most of the land, and I'm sorry, on the right or the left, I'm going to call it the side opposite Hawksnest, right, is owned by Mr. Todd Perry and Mr. Freitas. But most leads me to believe that there might be a piece of land that is owned by someone else. And I want to make sure, and this is where our DPW director probably could satisfy that criteria for me, is I want to make sure that there is no taking of land inadvertently or without consent of that homeowner. So that would be number two. I'd like to see a signage and speed management plan prior to beginning any work. I guess at the end of the day, what I'm asking, and I would be asking our DPW director through town administration or however the process needs to go effectively, but I want to make sure that all of the people who stood up before us and emailed us, all their concerns are satisfied. And as Mr. Evans said, you know, no deal is perfect. It's all about trade-offs. And as long as this board does its job and we listen to the public, which I believe we have, the public, I believe, is in support of this, with proper measures in place to make sure that they are still comfortable in their place of residence and with the roads around beautiful, natural area that they live. So, and then from a plowing standpoint, only if it meets, Round Cove, for example, only if it meets the DPW standards. So those are my contingencies, and I'd like to hear from the board if there's any others that, that they'd like to discuss or have be heard.
I'd just start if you want.
Please, somebody.
DPW director would be required to bring it up to his own standards, so he won't plow it if he can't do the work.
Perfect.
Signage plan, I would imagine that at the rate this board moves, that we would bring that back six times, and this will be three or four years before we get it done. Again, I believe that that belongs with the experts and the professionals, the police chief and the DPW director. And certainly we can instruct administration to have these conversations with them to pass along the public and our concerns. But I don't think we should be tying this thing to anything. If we're going to get it done, we should get it done. To your point about somebody else's land, we've already heard that there's 14 feet. We've already heard, other than a few spots, there's 14 feet. So we're not going to be touching anyone else's land, but we can certainly ask him to make sure that we're not. And there's very simple apps I can stand on and tell you who owns it. And then we could also work with the state, or we, the DPW director, could work with the state if we need to do something on the right-hand side there, coming in from Round Cove pavement, if we need to switch sides of the road. But if we approve this in concept, then our professionals can work on it. And the residents, for the most part, have access to the DPW director and highway employees and any other employer in this town, they can certainly give them their credit. So I wouldn't tie this to much, personally.
Would you tie it to the minimum of the sale of the land being consummated?
100%.
Let me make a motion to that effect. I've got all this stuff.
You've been writing a lot of stuff over there, I can't wait to hear what you got. Sure?
All right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that the town assume full responsibility for maintenance and snow removal for Round Cove Road and Hawksnest Road with the following conditions. Round Cove, the Round Cove roadwork shall be confined to a 14-foot layout. Two, initial roadwork should involve smoothing and filling only with grading. Three, such work shall not commence until the purchase and sale between Mr. Freitas and the Native Land Conservancy has been consummated with a purchase, and that further the town will not be a signator of that purchase and sale agreement. And four, that final design and road finish should be at the discretion of the DPW director with input from citizens in such a manner as has been his past practice.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm going to ask for clarification on that last one. Could you read that last one one more time? Final design and road finish?
I don't know if it's going to read the same way again.
Use a different voice.
Final design and road finish, because we're talking about T-base, that's a whole different discussion that I don't want to have tonight. We're committing to filling potholes and laying it out. We also, we're talking about road bumpouts for people to pass. We're not going to design a road tonight. So that's what that means, is the DPW director, final design and road finish shall be at the discretion of the DPW director with input from citizens in such a manner as has been his past practice. He does have hearings with people, and we're leaving it up to him. I'm not going to tell him how to hold a hearing or how to design a road.
So I can jump on and support that, I would like to add the word signage.
Okay. Michael McCaskill is going to be responsible for signage, you say?
Yeah, we'll come back six times to six different meetings.
And that signage be placed, appropriate signage be placed on the road?
DPW and...
I'm going to leave that up to him. Appropriate signage shall be placed on the road. At the discretion of the DPW director.
Would satisfy my, my wish.
Okay, that's number five then, and I give this to Megan when I get done.
You can give that to me, and I did receive this tonight, five signatures from owners on or near Round Cove Road and/or living in the town of Harwich. We sign our names below to say that we are in favor of the combined conservation sale of approximately 17 acres abutting Round Cove Road in exchange for the town of Harwich making minimal road improvements near Round Cove and Hawksnest Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sounds like they already agreed with me.
Okay, so we have a motion, an amended motion. Do we have an amended second?
Yes. I do have further conversation.
Of course you do.
And maybe through you, I could ask the requestor, you know, Liz Dubuque is here this evening, one question.
I would be happy to hear it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Read it again, just to make sure, I know you're going to vote against it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Only question is, because the addendum that you supplied us for the request has different language than what we're about to vote.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with the motion that we put forward? And can your addendum obviously be changed to reflect that in the purchase and sales?
I guess, the only thing that's kind of going through my mind is like timeframe, you know, are we going to be able to come up, will the DPW be able to come up with, you know, maybe they could do this like within a week or two weeks, or I don't know, is there any way that we could sort of have, you know, a guesstimate so that we, within the, we've extended the purchase and sale agreement?
So, if I may.
Please.
So basically, what I'm asking you is to go back, we're basically approving what you've done with some stipulations.
Okay.
So it'll be done when we walk out of here tonight.
Okay.
The work itself won't be.
No.
But we'll have, we'll be in agreement, with the exception of the use of the T-base and some of the other language that's in your addendum, but we are agreeing to make that single-lane road improved and to improve Seth Whitefield, Hawksnest, and Plowett.
Beautiful.
So you're getting, you're getting all of that, I just want to make sure.
By vote.
What's that?
By vote.
By vote.
Okay.
As long as you know that you're going to have to change that language in that addendum when you go back to your attorney for that purchase and sales. Because we're not approving T-base.
The language that was in it. Okay, that's fine.
And we're not a signator.
And you'll get that to me, I'm sure.
Yes, and I would ask administration if we could break this down and get a letter to Liz that says, states what we voted tonight and what we're going to do. As far as the timeframe on the road goes, in my conversations with the DPW director, he said this is not a heavy lift, this is two guys, two days.
That's what I thought.
Does not think that this is, this is what he does on a normal...
Well, I didn't mean the actual work, but like...
It'll be approved when you walk out tonight.
Okay, all right. And just one little comment that I wanted to add is that the layout of the road is 20 feet. I don't think there's going to be any problem, it's not like you're going to have to go, you know, into the state park or into our land or Todd's land, and the last lot there is owned by Anthony Fava, which I think he might be listening in. He has no issue with this, because it's his frontage as well. But I don't think you're going to have to touch anybody's actual land.
Which road?
I think it's all would incur, it would all work within the layout.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
And you're clear that we're only approving a 14-foot lane?
If that's, the DPW says that that's adequate.
That's what we're voting for.
Yep, right, and, right, and flattening it out, like, yeah.
Yeah.
Pitch, whatever. Yeah, sounds beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I'm going to do a roll call on this one.
Sure.
Pete?
No.
Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Three to one.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, item B, discussion and possible vote on the reconstruction renderings of the West Harwich Baptist Church, 62 Route 28.
Thank you, Pete. And again, before we begin taking this one on, I'd like to make it really clear to the public that we are and will be following the agenda item, the letter with this. letter with this, and what is before this board right now, as Mr. Pikarski just stated, is to vote on the reconstruction renderings of the West Harwich Baptist Church, 62 Route 28. I will open it up to the public if there's anybody who would like to speak.
Good evening, Bob Nickerson. First thing I want to say is I talked to Rob and Kelly today to get confirmation that the town is gonna own the cemetery and take care of the cemetery. Is that right? Okay, which I really appreciate you doing that, that's great. The other thing I want to bring up is the fact that two, two people, two different engineers looked at the facility and said that the facility is not able to be reconstructed. I have not been in the facility, but I have reconstructed a number of buildings of that age and worked on those. I'm also a structural engineer. Those structures, that structure was built about the same time as the Brooks Academy structure, certainly could have some damage, that doesn't mean it couldn't be repaired. So I'm very disappointed that you're gonna tear down the structure that could...
Excuse me, hold on, hold on. With all due respect, we're not, there's nobody said that we're tearing down anything. We are here simply to look at the renderings, to be clear that if in fact demolition or reconstruction, however we get to the end of the game with this, with this building, that it will be like-kind to what is there.
Right, and that's...
I have to be careful here, we can't go down the road of questioning demolition or structural integrity. If you want to speak about the renderings that are in the packet, whether or not you think those renderings...
Are adequate.
Are adequate renderings for us to vote on, to then move it to, and this is really important, and I appreciate where you're going with this, if this moves to the regulatory historical commission, that's where the public's gonna have their...
Right, and I plan to be there too, so.
That's right.
Okay. No, I have no problem with the renderings, they're very similar to what it looks like, and I don't have a problem with that part. Thank you.
Is that, okay, thank you.
If I may.
Yeah, please.
And just, I want to correct one thing for the record. We hope to own the cemetery.
Excuse me?
We hope to own the cemetery. Part of the public, you know, the benefit to the public was the town taking possession of that cemetery. We don't own the property yet, we're not, we're, this is all still in negotiations, so we hope to own the cemetery in the end.
So that is not a condition of...
There's more than one property. One at a time.
Right, right.
Please.
So that is not a condition of the agreement that the town had or the Baptist Church had?
If I...
Please.
And Don, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we have to get there still. That certainly is the intent of the town, and it was certainly in the intent of the bidder on the RFP, but legally we still need to get there.
Okay, I'm not saying you own it now, I'm just saying that's where your goal is.
That's our goal.
Okay, 'cause I mean, I know how, I walked through the cemetery and some of those monuments are amazing with Chase family and such, and I would hate to see that disrupted.
One of our strongest fans of that cemetery is sitting in the second to last row.
Thank you for your input. Anybody else in the public?
Hopefully this will pass muster. Linda Sibley, I'm speaking for the Board of the Harwich Historical Society. It is a statement from the Harwich Historical Society whose mission is to preserve, collect, and interpret Harwich history. Preserving the West Harwich Baptist Church is more than saving a building, it is protecting the heart of the community's heritage and identity. This church stands as a tangible link to our shared history, reflecting the craftsmanship, culture, and values of the generations before us. Its walls have witnessed revolution, weddings, and wars, events that bind the fabric of our town. Tearing it down would not only erase this legacy, but also diminish the unique character that sets our town apart. Instead of demolition, let's further explore adaptive reuse opportunities and breathe new life into this church. By preserving this landmark, we honor our past for future generations to enjoy. We ask that every possible means be taken to preserve the existing structure. Megan? Thank you.
What else? Please.
Thank you.
Remember, we're trying to keep it to the renderings.
Yes.
And not the concept of demolition.
Thank you. Matt Sutcliffe in Harwich, I fully support the previous speaker, I think she's got the right idea, the right spirit for the town. And my question is, why are we even discussing renderings, which in effect opens a door to demolition, prior to a full understanding of the contract? I think I went to town meeting thinking I'd preserved a building, unlike Exchange Hall, and apparently something's getting lost between the vote and town hall. There's a contract that Davenport was savvy enough apparently to wiggle around to their liking.
So the opinion from council stated, the RFP requires any structure built in its stead must be aesthetically similar to the existing church as determined by the select board. The applicant must submit plans, renderings of a renovated or new structure to the select board for approval. That was triggered when the applicant went for a request for demolition. It is nothing more than the process.
Okay, I'm clear on that. So the RFP, basically we set ourselves up for a possible demolition, is that what you're saying?
I didn't say that.
Well, the RFP said that they have this opportunity.
So as I, as I said earlier, and I respect what you're saying and hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
The process that we're following tonight states that we are going to look at the renderings and determine whether or not they're sufficient to move forward to the request for demolition.
Okay.
Now, the historic, Historic Commission will be the one to answer all of these questions. They're gonna answer whether or not the structural engineer did the right, did all the work that they should have done and prior to granting demolition. But in order to get to that step, we have to approve the renderings.
Well, I'll take, I'll take your word for it, because, but I still frankly just don't get it. The town voted to save it, save the building, did they not? Did the town not vote to save the building?
The town voted to preserve the exterior facade of the building.
It was that specific?
Yes.
Oh, I apologize for not being adequately informed. So, so preserve the exterior of the building. I mean, I guess Notre Dame got preserved, and I won't go any further, I understand.
Thank you.
But we can obviously do it, we can go to the moon, we can preserve it.
Anybody else?
Yep. Duncan Berry, West Harwich. I just wanted to say that unlike Bob Nickerson, I really seriously encourage you to deny the facility of these renderings. They are like very low-level, low-resolution, like first-year CAD designs. This is unsatisfactory work, the renderings, and I'll tell you, I went in at the request of Mr. Viera to go over with their architect in August of 2023, to take the building apart, you know, chunk by chunk, molding by molding, surface by surface, and the architect who did the rendering said, "Oh, I haven't heard about any of these things since I was in college." I said, "Well, you're not the right guy for this. You need to have, they need to have somebody that actually understands the rendering, the actual surface fabric of the building." You can't have somebody who's just sitting there clicking lines on a 2D screen, and that's what we've got, and it's really low-res, like we've all seen one-to-one scale models of like, you know, let's say a Harley-Davidson in Legos. To me, that's what we're looking at here. This is really low-res, low-quality, we can do so much better, and so can Davenport. They're the one who stepped up and wanted to do this, so they should do it right. You know, because what you end up having when you do something that's like very low-res like this, we pass it and we say, "Well, you know, those moldings, it's a dork pilaster." Well, we decided because of the shortage on this particular, you know, molding, we're not gonna be able to do that, so we're gonna make this compromise." And that's how you slide very down a very slippery slope. You know, I'm not gonna get into the demolition thing, but really, this is a bridge too far. This is not satisfactory, very low-quality and very low-res. I would encourage you to unanimously reject this out of hand and demand better quality work. Thank you.
Thank you, Duncan.
Hi, one more comment. First off, I, Bob Nickerson, I didn't really look at those drawings in detail, but one of the things I'm really up for is Historic can only give a one-year demolition delay. They can't stop it. So that's what I'm trying to do, is stop it, make them go back and look at it and actually redesign the structure. Would take half of what he cares about and I care about is the, the whole structure would still be the same structure, but I don't know what kind of tools you're gonna have to get them interested in actually doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm very suspicious of renderings. They're done by software, CAD, not done by some guy 100 years ago with a pen. And Davenport will be looking for every cost benefit they can find. They're not in the business of providing a rendering that's authentic. They're interested in their cost. I don't think this town needs to play into their costs in any which way. And I, the example I'll give you is the Melrose Inn. I invite you, when you walk by the, go drive by the Melrose Inn next time, if you've been around for 60 or 70 years, you can't help but acknowledge it's not the inn that we grew up with. And this church will not be the church that we're looking at unless we are just hard on Davenport and tell them we are not here to provide cost benefit for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, turn it over to the board. If anybody wants to start. Don? Why not? Why not? It's been a trend so far this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Of course.
Let me first start by saying something that should be the obvious, but nobody's gotten a hold of here. We don't own the building. We will own the building for maybe 15 to 20 minutes while there's a double closing. So whatever we can leverage, you have to understand that our role in this was to perfect the lot lines, because somehow or another, through the passage of years, the cemetery became untethered. It wasn't part of the property for the church anymore. Nobody can prove that it was. So our involvement was to actually create a property so that something could happen. Now, having said that, I have to say, and I've said this to the chair, I am extremely annoyed at our legal counsel and how this has morphed. We've taken more than a year and a half, there's been foot dragging, the building doesn't care what we're doing in deliberations. The building is decaying on its own, independent of anything we want to see happen. I am concerned that the thing is just gonna fall in on itself, I really am. It all, with due respect to you, because once the ceiling gate went, got loose, the top part of all those walls are essentially holding up each other. But having said all that, you can leverage anything you want to here, I thought that this was absolutely the cart before the horse. We shouldn't be talking about a rendering of anything. The proper place for this to have been is there's a minister who's marketing this to Davenport. Davenport is alleging that it has to be torn down. The proper place for this to go is for people who actually know what the hell they're doing, would be the Historic District Commission. That's, that's who they were in front of, and they should be, I believe Duncan's a member, but I mean ultimately, nope. But you know members, I'm sure you do. But the problem is, is that they do this. They ascertain whether there's legitimacy to the contentious are being made. We're just sitting here making it up. If we say, "Yeah, it looks okay to us," because I don't know what looks okay. I know that, I've said this to friends and family in the past, that when you go through Williamsburg and Starbridge, you do know those aren't the real original buildings, that they were rebuilt to a purpose. And I get what you're saying about, you know, cost-cutting and then all of a sudden nothing is the same, it just is an illusion of being close to the same. But why are we even having this discussion? Because we're not the owners, we're not the applicant, we're not the people who are gonna do the work, and we're not the people who would normally decide what the criteria is for demolition. So in every possible way, I don't understand why we're here talking about what something might look like if another four or five things happened before it. So that's my piece.
Thank you, Don. Hold on, we're here now. Michael?
I'd like to defer to Pete.
I knew that was coming.
It'll be quick. I have no idea why it's before us either. I also disagree with council's opinion, but I think what, I think what gets me, I think Mr. Berry, you know, was kind enough to drop it to my level and talk about the Legos. And, and he's spot on, you know, these, these, these drawings don't give us anything. So if, if it does have to come before us, we need more detail than what's, what's been presented. But I honestly don't believe it belongs here.
Mike?
I don't really have anything to say. I might after you talk, but...
The only thing I'll say is that the RFP, which I don't believe you and I had anything, we weren't part of that. The RFP has a language in it that requires any structure built in its stead must come to the select board first. So I don't have the same question as to why is it here before us? It's in the RFP that was signed back in, I don't know what year that was, but it was signed in...
2020.
That's what the language states. That's why it's here before us. Whether that's the right thing or the wrong thing, that's what was signed back then.
If I could just quickly check.
Yeah, please.
My only opinion is I think the PNS changed that entire document.
I too am a little confused with a lot of what council, and I think you know the discussions I've had with council over the last couple of weeks. It's about as clear as mud to me. At the end of the day, I hold strong belief that our Historic Commission will do exactly what they're tasked to do, which is determine whether or not this building is suitable for demolition. That's in their purview, it's not in our purview. The second thing that they'll do is to make sure that the RFP, the purchase and sale agreement, and legal council's opinion, that the reconstruction, the renovation, or the rebuilding of this property will satisfy the RFP, the purchase and sale, and Historic's jurisdiction, which is a one-to-one, like-kind structure. Now, the, the outside of the structure, many may not know, has vinyl siding on it or aluminum siding. We trying to preserve that? We're not trying to preserve the vinyl siding, we're not trying to preserve the aluminum siding. That has nothing, nothing to do with Historic. So again, and back to the renderings, yeah, they're not, they're not a full set of plans like everybody would probably want to see. And it's this board's decision right now to determine whether or not we would like the applicant, applicant to come back with a full set of plans, or at least full exterior elevations, which I don't think is unreasonable. And then they would satisfy the language in the RFP, and then they can move forward to Historic. Or maybe they won't. Maybe they'll say this has become too much, and maybe they'll move, as they still can, from the game. They could, they could just walk from the project. That's an option. As Don said, we don't own the building yet. So until all permitting is satisfied with the applicant, they have the opportunity to leave. It's an option. We're here, everybody understands the choice we make, but not everybody understands all the options and the choices we had before we made that choice. So, you know, I'm here to listen to the board, I'm here to listen to the public, and again, do what I think is in the best interest of Harwich. So, does anybody else want to say anything? I think Matt, did you want to come up one more time? Happy to hear you.
You've been tired of it, but can't help it.
No, we're not. Just, take your time, just hurry.
Okay. The seller, I'm sure, wants the town to facilitate this deal. That gives the town the opportunity to specify what it wants, and I somehow see that as missing in this picture. I respect what you said, Don, that it's the seller's, I don't think the seller's in the driver's seat, I think you guys are in the driver's seat. And because of that, I think you should be careful to specify things that we thought we voted on. Simply as I want to put it. Thank you.
Anybody else in the board?
I'll end with just a question to everybody, and not to answer tonight, but what's next? What happens when Davenport walks away? And it's nice to talk about their reputation or what we think they might do to cut costs. A lot of us were involved in a lot of detailed conversation, but what's next? And... And if that building falls down around itself, we're currently getting zero taxes on it because they don't pay him, not because they're supposed to, they are supposed to. We're getting zero taxes. It's an eyesore. There's a big movement in West Harwich to create something out there. And if we're going to take the time now to fight over a set of drawings and to get to that level of detail, I can almost guarantee they'll walk. Cut corners is not something that I think Davenport's going to do. But again, and I will follow the will of the people on this, what are we going to do when the only person interested in that church walks away from it? Are we going to get another neighborhood group out there together to raise money that couldn't put enough together to build the old West Harwich School? Are we gonna, it's not going to happen. We're going to end up with a building that's going to continue to rot around itself. We will not own the cemetery at that point. So just give some thought to that. And Matt, I'm not, I'm not talking against what you're asking for, not in any way, shape, or form, but looking at how to get to yes isn't going to be with this developer dictating them spending a ton of money up front to make everybody happy. And I agree with you, Matt. I'm not going against what you're saying. But everybody really needs to look at what could happen if they just walk away from this deal. There is nobody else.
We have to go to the mic, and I'd be happy to hear it. And then Matt, if you just wanted to see if anybody is online who may want to speak, that would be great. After the other Matt. The other Matt. Not you, Matt. The other Matt.
There's a lot going on in West Harwich around this church right now. And what that will bring is that will be like a feeder. Michael doesn't have a crystal ball. I don't have a crystal ball. But I know there's action and development which will lead itself to somebody wanting this space. A lot of the homework's already been done. Next guy coming in. And frankly, I'm not, I have, I don't have the confidence in Davenport based on history that he will do what in my mind's eye should be done. I don't have confidence in him. But I'm not worried if he walks. In fact, I'd almost be happier about it. Somebody will come along who has a historical sense and is not interested in solely rents. I know that, I feel it in my blood because I had a building like that once, the way you looked up at the laugh, Jenny Lynn sang in it on her national tour. Five years later, it was on the National Register. So I know this can be done. I've done it. And I don't say that to just pat myself. I'm saying it, imploring you to consider that anything can be done with lumber. Anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, is anyone online?
Sally, you?
Sally Urbano.
Urbano.
You have the floor. Sally, can you hear us?
Yeah, thank you for waiting, because it took me a while figuring out how to do this. I'll stay on point, but it's another question. So if Davenport does ultimately demolish the building, he's saying that he would do the replication of the church. I'm saying at that point, he's at ground zero for all the zoning that's within that special district. And you know, I'm a strong preservationist at heart. I brought that, that Dunham Town meeting for the preservation restriction, but it pains me to say, I don't care. If that building is demolished, it can never be recreated. We'll get some sort of secondhand, you know, a square block with a steeple on top. So I would let it go. If it's demolished, then I don't, I can't see any reason that we'd have to go for this piece of, you know.
Okay, so.
Yes, hold on, another, another.
Can I speak?
Sure. Hi, Lou.
Mr. Chairman.
Just state your name one time real quick.
Lou Urbano.
Thank you.
The only point I want to make is, it's okay to tear down the church. And Michael, it's okay to collect taxes on a new building. From a preservationist's point of view, from someone that lives by there, that drives by it every day, I think the town would be making a mistake in trying to create Disneyland. I know that the school came up, and I want to correct that. It wasn't that we couldn't raise the money. We could have raised the money. It was the conditions that were put upon us that caused us not to raise the money. We lived by those conditions. We made a condition, and I think everybody believes.
Sorry, Lou, I'm sorry. We're getting way off the agenda topic here. So I apologize for cutting you off.
Therefore, I would ask you to please reject this for the simple reason that the plans are better torn down, taken away, and a new building being proposed with new units inside is better for the community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, just for the record, I'm not advocating for tearing the building down. Never was, never have. I'm not advocating for that. I'm asking people to just look at what might be.
If anybody would like to, one more shot at the apple here. Go ahead, Duncan.
Thank you. Keeping it to the rendering. Shortness, sweet, yeah. So the idea is that, that I wanted to put forth is that we're at this point of discussing renderings because of the kind of legal inversion of intent from the beginning of the project to where we are now. Like you asked, Don, like, why are we here? How did we get here? We got here because we've gone through this serpentine corridor of legal curlicues that are looking at things upside down, backwards, and inverted. And it's like, so now we're talking about a preservation initiative that was like, you know, it's all gone. It's like having this conversation, like you say, it's cart before the horse. And look, I encourage you, look at the drawings again. Look at what your children would do when they do a drawing of home. It's a square box with a square box with a door, and a square box with crossbars and a triangle on top. Oh, there's another square and another triangle. That's the level of granularity. That is just, we deserve better. Come on.
Thank you. Ken, please.
Karen Horn, I drive by that beloved church every day, more than once. I may have missed this because I got here late, so I'm just going to ask the question. I don't understand how they actually own the building, or, you know, purchase and sale. We, the townspeople, took a vote and said whoever purchases this building must keep the building. And I know there's lots of opinions about it should be torn down, it should be kept. But there was a vote in town. We, the people, voted. It must stay. So I don't understand how we can even be entertaining a demolition permit. And I don't understand how we can be, we, the town, can be looking at drawings. And if somebody could just give me that answer, that is my fundamental question. How is it that that is being ignored, the vote of the people?
Thank you for your question. Do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for your edification, since I came up with the language, the building was not to be preserved. We were preserving the historic envelope of the building. That's exactly what the language was.
So what does that mean?
It means to preserve the historic envelope, the exterior, not the building itself.
How does demolishing it preserve the exterior? I mean, I really don't understand.
It doesn't, and that's why we're off point here again. I've said this before, I'll say it again. We shouldn't be here because we're at the point where, for whatever reason, and I believe, like I said, my belief structure has me pointing at legal counsel and dragging their feet and coming up with an RFP initially. That wasn't what we asked for. But for whatever reason, it delayed, and weatherization has started happening to the building. I think it's premature to talk about anything about what something might look like when we don't own it, and there hasn't been an approval to take it down. My only concern as a citizen of the town is, and it remains, I've said this to board members in the past, given the fact that there's really only a minister left in the congregation, and there's no deep pockets, if that building starts to decay to the point where it does become a public hazard, there's, nobody has any money to take it down. It's going to wind up being on the citizens of the town of Harwich to actually consummate that. And, but I really feel like I don't want to be involved in endeavor where I'm spending tax money on ripping down a historic something or other. I really don't want to do that. If there was an avenue to make this right, I'd love to pursue it, but I don't see where we fit in with this. We're being asked, I don't know, it's kind of like asking somebody who's currently married what his new partner would look like if his current partner is gone. The building's there. It's not ours. And nobody's given it any approval to take it down, so why are we talking about what the new one would look like when we don't know that there's going to be a new one?
And that was the second half of my question. I think it was last week, the Historic Commission had a meeting that, I don't know if it got postponed or canceled with this on the agenda. And I don't understand how they can take up considering a demolition permit when we're supposed to be preserving the quote envelope. I don't, that's the other thing.
Legal counsel designated the sequence of order and asked them to delay their hearing so that we could have this. That's why we're doing it. I object. I don't feel that that was the right judgment on the part of legal.
To have it come here, you mean?
Everything that they did, they get it to be here. I think it's wrong-headed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? Well, I would entertain a motion.
I'd move that we delay any consideration about what any successor building would look like until this is referred to the proper board, that being the Historic District Commission.
I'll second for discussion.
So let's discuss.
I think we land the same place with no action.
Yeah. That's what it means. And as I said, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with no action at this point.
But we should point them to where they should go.
Sorry, go ahead.
Because I somewhat agree, but I think a vote sends a clear message that that's the direction we want it to go. And that's the direction we believe it belongs going in.
Wrong place.
Go ahead.
Nope, that's, I'd agree. I'd agree. So, I'm sorry.
So who would we, who would we be making that statement to? Or should we just be making the statement that we think our legal opinion is as clear as mud, as was mentioned earlier? Who would we be making a statement with that motion to? Davenport? Legal counsel? At this point, I honestly think we should get the lawyers in the room and figure out what they're even talking about, more than just denying renderings. I'm not voting for the renderings at this point, anyway.
No, right, but my point is, somebody put this before us, correct? Was it counsel? It was counsel. So, and so with your case, our motion should then be to instruct counsel to go back.
Well, instruct them to go here.
And articulate how they came up with this process.
They did. I sent that to all of you. And, I'm sorry, hold on one second. Just for the public's understanding, this went to Historic. Historic, and we had asked, I had asked for counsel's opinion two and a half weeks prior to Historic meeting. I didn't get anything. At 2:30 on the day Historic was meeting, the opinion appeared. Chair Kavanaugh actually reached out to find out what was going on. And we got the opinion. I think this is important for everybody to understand the timeline, maybe so. But the chair of the Historical Commission was put in such an awful position. And there were townspeople who showed up. If they didn't get to see it on Facebook, Harwich Old Timers, they showed up. Total breach of how we should be doing our work. It fell apart, in my opinion, 100%. But at that point, that's what we had to go with. The applicant was told that they weren't going to be heard that night, and then counsel gave us this. Hold on, sorry. So at that point, I knew I was going to be the chair of this meeting, and the applicant's next meeting before Historic Commission was going to be the 15th of January, I believe. I think I'm right. So I wanted to give the applicant enough time, after they came through us, to have time to prepare for their next meeting, if in fact there was a positive vote on these renderings. This is very complicated, and it's very, very, very important. The passion of this town for that building is like nothing I've seen before. I think it's fantastic. I also think that everybody at the town level has been put in a pretty uncomfortable position to try to figure out what counsel's leading us down the road with. So to Michael's point, who do we even, you know, who do we kick the football back to? I don't know. I don't know. But we're the select board, and we're not looking for approval from counsel.
No, but I think to Michael's point, they provided an opinion. What we want to understand is how they arrived at that opinion.
The RFP requires. That's how they arrived at the opinion. That's what I was told. I'm not saying it's true or false or not. I'm just trying to shed, put a flashlight on the question of, how'd you get here? Well, we got here because the RFP requires any structure built, yada, yada, yada. So done, please.
Yeah, if we're going to go back to original sin, which we obviously are, just so, because two of you didn't even, weren't even part of this discussion. The original opinion of legal counsel, when they put out an RFP that we did not ask for with terms that we did not want, came to the conclusion that we had to have affordable housing in it. At which point, I said, that's ridiculous. That wasn't what the discussion surrounded at a town meeting. They said, well, then what's the public purpose? In a successive meeting, about a month or so later, the lead counsel, which we now have, came back and said, I read the DCPC, which has as a preamble what it is we're trying to preserve in West Harwich. It expresses what the public purpose is before it gets into approving the area. And I said, interesting, your colleague, actually, I said, it's not often I get to pay for two different legal opinions that are completely opposite each other. At which point she said, well, that's the other person's counsel. I said, no, it's part of your own law firm. So she, at the very get-go, did not understand. As a matter of fact, I'd love to see her sitting in a room with us here, because I don't think she's ever been to Harwich. I don't think she understands what it looks like. I don't think she understands what we're trying to save. I don't think she understands anything about the town other than, she's a face on a computer or a voice on a telephone, as far as I'm concerned. Never met her. And she gave that advice, I'm not even sure what the background is of that advice, to be honest with you. It'd be lovely to have her here to try to defend that and see how that meshes with the discussion at town meeting, which was pretty darn clear about what our objective was. And yeah, you're right, we're not talking about saving aluminum siding or anything. I forget who it was who said it, but it is part of the texture of the town. It's identifiable in that sweeping curve, and that was one of the things that we started with as a discussion point for creating Captain's Row as an officially recognized area. I don't think she gets it. So everything that flows from this has been odd, including the affordable housing part, because there was no conversation whatsoever. I pointed out, it's something that's the size of a master bedroom's closet in this town. You're not going to get $3,000 a month for it, so it pretty much takes care of itself when you're talking about a 700 or 800-foot room, you know, loft room, about what it's going to be rented as. This was never contemplated as part of our affordable housing inventory. So I don't even know that she knows what the objective is, and I don't know why she's telling us that we have to do something that we know in our hearts, according to our charter, is jumping the line. It not, it should not be here. It should have been brought up by the owner of the property in conjunction with whoever it is that had a PNS that could show that he was going to wind up being the owner, and being brought to a regulatory board, which is why we have them. We're not supposed to be experts on everything. The select board populates these boards with people that they have reasonable belief know what they're doing in a particular area. We'd only be substituting our amateur abilities in that, and I'm not comfortable with, I never was good at putting together Legos. Motorcycle wouldn't have looked right if I had finished it. So to your point, I have no idea of knowing what we could do to correct that because I don't use CAD. I have no idea of what this should look like, and I'm not sure that we should be talking about it because we're replacing something that we haven't even approved to be taken down. That's my piece.
Mr. Chair, real briefly, two points if I could.
Please.
Talk about the serpentine. Holy smokes. So I understand counsel's written opinion regarding the RFP, but there was no follow-up as to how the PNS impacts that. And that's what I'd like to understand. To the other point, I'm not going to support these renderings because I would like to see something a little more sophisticated. And I guess I asked you for two, but I'm going to take a third. Based on this conversation, I'd like to withdraw my second and take no action on this item. And then we'll work with town administrator, the town administrator's office to work with counsel.
Get her here.
I agree with Pete.
Thank you.
No, I. No action isn't action, and we can just tell them to watch what Don just said.
No, they'll charge us.
Yeah, it's true. But they need to be physically here. I'm tired of telephone conversations with them.
Okay. No action should have been taken. Moving on to old business letter. See, Mr. Kastner from today?
Select board will hold a second reading of the draft policy on public comment and potential vote to adopt. Just for the board's indication, I'm going to read from page 115 of the packet, which is the final version with edits made from the discussion on December 9, 2024.
Pete, I'll ask you to hold one second until everybody exits.
She took my agenda.
My time's up. You have to read it now, Mr. Chair.
Chair read it last time.
Do you have anything?
This is my agenda. I'm keeping yours. You have the...
Patrick, could you shut that if you don't mind? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Pike.
All right. Town of Harwich Public Comment Announcement Policy adopted by Select Board. A, Purpose. This policy is adopted to facilitate orderly and efficient public comment announcement periods at meetings of town public bodies. It will protect the ability of the residents of Harwich and other persons to provide feedback or information pertinent, public bodies, or information to pertinent public bodies regarding matters of public interest, town initiatives, operations, services, and programs. To allow speakers a fair opportunity to address a public body and to ensure the public body may accomplish its stated business in an efficient manner, these guidelines seek to ensure compliance with the open meeting law and meet other legal and constitutional obligations. Meetings of public bodies in the town of Harwich should be places to engage in orderly and peaceable discourse. B, Authority. Principles of free speech and freedom to petition the government. Fundamental rights protected by the United States and Massachusetts constitutions prohibit public bodies preventing all speech that may be upsetting or offensive. As such, this policy establishes reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions sufficient to facilitate orderly and peaceable public comment announcement periods at meetings of elected and appointed public bodies of the town. C, Legal Standards. Meetings of public bodies are subject to the requirements of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25. The Open Meeting Law empowers the chair of a public body to preside at the, and, sorry, preside at and regulate the proceedings of meetings. Pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20G, no person shall address a meeting of a public body with the permission of the chair, and all person shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. Any person wishing to speak in an open meeting must first be recognized by the chair. All questions raised and all comments made by a duly recognized speaker must be directed to the chair of the public body alone, not to individual members of the public body, staff, or the public. The chair is authorized to maintain order, and although a rare occurrence, has authority after appropriate warnings are ignored, to take action up to and including removal of a person who is disrupting a meeting. D, Application. To secure the rights of the public body, nope, to secure the rights of the public to participate in public comment announcement periods in the town of Harwich in a manner consistent with law, and to thereby protect the town and members of elected and appointed bodies from civil rights claims, this policy shall apply to all public bodies in the town of Harwich. E, Procedures. Number one, the public comment announcement period is for Harwich residents and non-resident taxpayers. Non-residents of the town of Harwich are only able to speak during public comment at the discretion of the board. Number two, all agendas of multiple member bodies in the town of Harwich shall include a 20-minute period for public comment announcements, which can be adjusted by the chair or the majority of the public body based on the meeting's formal agenda content and time requirements, subject to the limitations set forth in Paragraph 3. Three, while statements made during a public comment announcement period are not required to address an agenda item for that particular meeting, such comments must relate to a matter within the public body's jurisdiction. Public comments announcements on matters outside the public body's jurisdiction may be ruled out of order by the chair. To avoid due process issues, a person seeking to provide comments on a matter appearing on the same agenda will be asked to defer until a specific agenda item is reached. Number four, each speaker will be allowed to speak once for up to three minutes per topic. Number five, a recognized speaker may not cede or assign their time to another unless such an assignment is required as reasonable accommodations for such persons because of a disability. All speakers who may need an accommodation are strongly encouraged to contact the town administrator's office or the chair of the public body at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. That said, to facilitate an efficient public comment announcements period, groups that have multiple speakers with the same viewpoint may consider consolidating their comments or designating one person to speak on their individual's behalf. Number six, board members and town employees who have business with the public body will not request recognition during the public body, yeah, public comment announcement period. Moving to F, Section F, Disruptive Conduct, Unprotected Speech. Disruptive conduct and engaging in other unprotected speech, including but not limited to the following, may be grounds for the chair of a public body to curtail speech and take other action as appropriate. Number one, speaking without being recognized. Number two, continuing to speak after the chair has curtailed additional verbal comments. Number three, interrupting a recognized speaker. Number four, speaking about matters not within the jurisdiction of the public body. Number five, engaging in conversations while another person is speaking. Number six, making true threats of violence directed toward a particular individual. And number seven, making comments and citing imminent lawlessness. Section G, Public Body Response. Number one, a public comment announcement period is a listening session, and the public body is there to listen. Number two, matters raised during public comment announcement periods are not required to and are unlikely to be addressed or resolved by the public body at that same meeting. Number three, at the discretion of the chair or the majority of the public body, matters raised during public comment announcements may or may not appear on a future agenda or be referred to the town administrator for appropriate action, if any. Disclaimer. A public comment announcement period is not time for debate or response to comments by the public body. Comments made during the public comment announcement period do not reflect the views or the position of the public body. Because of a constitutional free speech principle, the public body does not have the authority to prevent all speech that may be upsetting and/or offensive during the public portion of the meeting.
Motion to approve second reading.
Double. Motion and a second. I need discussion. Don.
You know how I feel overall, but I mean, just within the context of just getting approved, I thought we had agreed to this, but bodies under the purview at the very beginning, because it talks about pertinent public bodies, the word pertinent's there. I'm hoping to get some sort of understanding or agreement that that's where the select board has appointing authority over the boards. Excludes elected bodies specifically, like libraries, water, wastewater, Montamois School Committee, and FinCom, which is actually a constructive town meeting, and it's appointed by another elected town official. I'd suggest that they use this as a template, but I don't think we have the legal authority to mandate it for other legal bodies that are elected on their own. And I think, I made that point in the past, I'm just hoping that somewhere along the line, we can make that explicit thought that pertinent actually means what I just said. It's things that are under our purview.
Any other board members?
I would agree with Don.
You're not going to get me to vote for it, but that's what I say.
You're spot on. We don't have the right to tell them to do any.
Pete, you want to add anything?
No, not at this time.
So we have a motion and a second. Are you asking for a different amendment in the language, or?
No, it's part of the legislative history. I mean, we can say that what was meant here by pertinent public bodies are public bodies that are either us or that we appoint members to.
Excellent. Any other discussion?
No, can you go back to, Don, your point, what did you just say?
Yeah, the reality is under, is part of our legislative history, because we've done the readings and everything, that we're defining right now, and it'll be in the minutes, that we've defined it that way, that a pertinent public body is more specifically excluding elected bodies like the library, trustees of the water wastewater commission, or Montamois School Committee, or the finance committee, which is appointed by a different jurisdiction. It's, everybody that's fed to that comes through the town moderator, who's also elected.
I understand we don't appoint all groups.
So, what we mean by pertinent in the first preamble paragraph really has to do with anything that's under our jurisdiction. I don't think it needs to change. It just needs to have some history that shows that's what our intent was.
And I don't disagree, however, this should be the goal and objective of each of these...
Yeah, we would encourage everybody to use it, yeah.
And clearly, within this policy, there's no section regarding punishment.
Our punishment is in being here.
Maybe they'll all watch and see how it works, and see whether or not they want to vote, right? So we have a motion and a second. I'm going to rule call this. Pete?
Aye.
Don?
No.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Three to one. Thank you.
Item D, Discussion on the Water Infrastructure Investment Fund. May be taken.
Just getting to my notes here. So I believe, Michael, did you ask for this?
The only thing I wanted to point out was some clarification, because somewhere along the line, we had asked that the CPC committee review this and see if there was anything that they wanted to do. Somewhere along the line, the message was that we wanted half of the CPC money, and therefore they were very against it. My intent in the very beginning of this whiff, when we spoke about this, was to replace the land bank debt portion of the CPA funds, so we're no longer paying the land bank debt, was to take that money, or a percentage of that money, or an average, I should say, of that money, because it's gone down over the last several years, and then apply that to a whiff. Today, Dave Nixon told me, chair of the CPC committee, the town administrator told him that it had to be a minimum of 1%. I couldn't find that in all of this paper we have tonight, but I would assume that he's referring to whatever portion of the law that is. In their last meeting, when they discussed it, there was not a whole lot of appetite for CPC. Now, it's not their decision, it's our decision, but if they don't make a recommendation for this on town meeting floor, then it will be a contentious issue probably, or at least a very debatable issue. So, I'd be in favor of doing a whiff if we could identify land bank debt funds, and I think it's a responsible thing to do. At this stage in the game, where we really haven't voted on any articles, and we really have not had much in front of us by way of substance, budget, and capital coming, that I think at this point, we should stop talking about the whiff. We've now had it on our agenda seven or eight times, and we're no further along, except for our packets continue to have all that paper in. So, if board members have the appetite, my suggestion would only be an average of the land bank funds over, say, the last five years, and put that money towards a whiff, if we can do it.
I had requested if there were any other sources available, and I don't see any of that material available tonight. As I said, there, I have no appetite for the whiff, but again, if there's other sources available, if I can have more detail on the CPC portion, you know, what's their total allotment per year, and I know it varies, and then what, how much of that is being allocated, and how many requests are they turning down each year? Those are the types of things I'd like to know before I even entertain going towards the CPC monies, but more importantly than that, I want to see what other options are available to us, or potentially available to us as a board.
Don?
Yeah, I agree with both of my colleagues, and one of the reasons I asked for the additional information is that got added to the packet is to show over the last 10 years how volatile the state. The state came into this, selling every town that if you surcharge your citizens 3%, we'll match it. And then slowly but surely, that's eroded, and it looks like a bumpy road if you look at the numbers. During COVID, it went down really severely. I only asked for that to show you that there's a volatility for other projects, so if you go beyond what was being spent on paying down land bank funds, you're going into a really bad place, because you're taking away from their ability to be able to fund things that we can't afford to fund ourselves. That's the first thing. But the second thing, and the devil's always in the details with these, and Michael's right, it just keeps coming back and back and back. I'd like some assurance when it talks about appropriating, that it's not just at a grand level, that each year that we approve X% for anything that revolves around spending for sewer-ing at our discretion, because that's not what appropriations at town meeting do. They get to hear what it is you want to spend money on. Even the CPC project, every one of them has to go and get an appropriation from town meeting, or else they don't pass. There's no money to pass his hands. So, I'd like some assurance that this doesn't mean, yeah, as long as it's within sewer-ing and the town knows that they've set aside $800,000 for a whiff, that during the course of the year, the select board can, at its will, under the general heading of sewer projects, take money from that fund and start allocating it to something without town meeting being involved at all, because that's a slippery slope that I don't want to get down, go down. And it doesn't really say anything, other than, I mean, sure, I trust all you guys, but you know, maybe in 10 years, I don't necessarily trust the board that's sitting here then, if you give them the unfettered authority to go and dip into the whiff fund during the course of the middle of the year to start spending it, just because it generically matches up. I'd like to have that say something like that, and it doesn't right now.
Okay, so I feel I have a clearer sense of where the board sits on this tonight. I'm going to ask the board for a little direction. Are we looking to bring this back in the near term with more funding sources and more information, or is this something that we'd like to potentially bring back after annual town meeting, when we've got a little bit more time, and we see what our budget looked like, and so forth and so on? I'm just wanting to make sure I do what the board is looking for.
Well, certainly not, to Michael's point, certainly not to just have the same piece of paper show up over and over and over again, because that's not helping anything.
If what I'm hearing is, we need additional funding sources if they're available. If there's none available, we'd like to see a piece of paper, from my understanding, there's no other funding sources are available, right?
And granularly, how do we disperse money from this fund?
Sure. So, when do we want to see this back? I'll do the work to get it, but I don't want to do the work to get it if we don't want to see it in the next month or two.
Personally, I'm in no rush, Jeff, but I don't know how the others feel.
You know how I feel about bringing things back.
All right, we're moving on. I will talk to Julie when she gets home, and we'll discuss a strategy on this for the future.
Item E, Discussion on the Proposed Wastewater Management Position.
Hey, Pete, I will, I think this was Michael's last, I'm going to turn this over to Michael.
Yeah, I read the materials again, and Megan, thank you for your opinion on this and what you were tasked with doing. Still a little confused as to, every time we get to the table, when we talk about this, nothing gets said from that side of the table, and then we end up at a point where you shoot down most of the points, and for good reason. Nowhere in there do I see the last scope of services that we discussed. And I believe what we refer to that to is a proposal for wastewater consulting services. And I know that GHD had something to do with that, as well as a past employee had something to do with that, and that document came in, but it was, and I can resend it, I'm looking at it. Specific project involvement was Phase 3 in Route 28 Dry Sewer, and there was about eight bullet points on that. Comprehensive wastewater management plan, effluent recharge investigation, there was three bullets on that. CWMP revisions, there was four bullet points on that. Permitting, policy guidance, future design and construction. I, outside of what I initially said, that I appreciate all of your points in your memo, I still strongly believe that administration, and it's not just to save administration time, it's to have a board representative that comes back to the board. And Don was involved in the CW Smith...
CDs.
CW Smith days, where we made a lot of mistakes, and I think we've come a long way from that, and we're not making the same mistakes, and our new engineers' services seem to be great, but it's a $50 million project. And I'm going to continue to advocate for this until we can get to a board vote. It really comes down to process, and the only past guidance that we had kind of took it away from going out for requests for quotes and made it so we could add maybe an employee and change a grade, which I really was never for, but that was the only guidance we were getting. I would suggest, based on Assistant Town Administrator's... I would suggest, based on Assistant Town Administrator Eldridge's memo, that we go back to wastewater consulting services, that we go out for an RFP on a contract that would add, that would equal no more than $35,000 or no more than $40,000. And then we only have to send three people, invitations to people. We don't have to go through the full procurement process, but we know that one that's already interested, and there's got to be other engineering services, and Chatham does some like stuff. But I would like the board to concentrate, focus, and have administration put this on the top of the list out of projects started, and go forward with this person, or company, whatever it is. We can get the quotes, not like them, and then just not do anything about it, but we've now wasted two months and more running around on the Assistant Town Administrator that has plenty to do in weighing out options that really don't spell out everything that we originally talked about. So again, for me, on a $50 million project, when we talk about funding, there was contingencies put into that $50 million funding and these projects that would pay for these services for board. And I have to believe in it. And the town of Brewster just did the same thing. I think it's slightly different because Griffin is a, our old engineer, is an engineer, but for engineering services, they've contracted him through the whole Millstone project now. So start to finish on Millstone because he knows more about Millstone project than anyone else. They hired him after he left and works for an engineering firm. They hired him to come back and do this work. So I believe that the mechanism's there, and I would just like to see how we get to yes, instead of trying to figure out how we continue to get to no. And for me, again, we have a lot of stuff on our plate, and we have so many unfinished projects. Taking this out of the hands of the town administrator, I certainly appreciate the things we can't, and if we can't, we can't, but having another voice for the board and set of eyes makes perfect sense to me. And I would like the administrator to focus on everything that we have not finished, so that we can right the ship and then start some new projects. So I'd like to go back to the scope of work that we presented last time before we got kind of pushed into the employee and then go out for requests for quotes outside of the, under the $50,000 threshold that you mentioned, and see what we get. We don't get anybody, we don't get anybody.
Through you, Mr. Chair, in your packet, I believe something says scope of services, and that is?
That is.
That is it?
That's what it looks like.
Without any identifying?
Yes.
Companies, that is what you had had previously.
And I would just state it for the record, that the water commissioner's forwarded me a document, and so did the past employee, that is a letter from the ethics board of what he can do and what he can't do. And nowhere in that says that he can't do. If he wanted to be one, I know he has to go through the process, but if that particular employee wants to do it, there's nothing that precludes him from doing it, based on what ethics says. And I can forward that to you as well, Megan. Not that it's relevant, because he might not be interested.
Thank you, Mike. Don or Pete?
I want to be able to do Albert.
Nothing more from board members on?
Yeah, yeah, wait, wait. No, it's okay. I thought you folks were in a conversation. Megan, just back to your point, that document states what, to the top?
Scope of services should be the second. I didn't have the packet open, electronic packet.
I see why it says scope of work. I don't see why it says scope of services. I don't see that in my packet. So I could be missing it, but I don't see this.
Let's see if I can get your page number on that, Pete, if I can find it.
But while everybody's looking.
Sure.
I want to reiterate Michael's points. I absolutely agree with him. This is one of those items that we continue to kick down the road, and I'd love to move forward on it, and I'm happy to move forward as a consultant. I too would prefer that over hiring a part-time town employee. And the only other addition I would make is, to my knowledge and my belief, that we'd have money available within the scope of the project to fund this position. At least, that's what I was led to believe, so if I'm incorrect, I'm happy to be corrected. But again, I'd like to see us move forward and come back with a vote to bring on a consultant and put this through the RFP process, whether we can do that this evening, or if we want to have that document in our packet before we move forward. I don't see it, but if somebody found it, great.
Cyrus, listen.
Yeah, no worries.
Don, you want to?
Yeah.
I don't see it in the packet. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be a little less gentle than Michael was with this. Week in, week out, we asked, Pete ends the meeting pretty much every week by saying, can I get the so-and-so? How about the such-and-such? I've been asking about the flagpole fund for seven months. I've been, Michael and I were asking about a parking bump out for the middle of town for, I don't know, what is it, seven months now, six months? There's just too much on the town administrator's plate already. That should not be one of our considerations here. We really want somebody whose sole focus is watching over this project. It used to be a lot of money when you're talking about tens of millions of dollars. So I want somebody that actually is conversant with this, who has their unfettered attention. It's somebody that reports to us as part of the project, because that's really, everybody else in the world does this. They have an expert project manager for something that's important enough to spend that kind of money on. So I don't think it's on the table to have the town administrator doing this. It shouldn't be. As an interim, I'm fine with that, but as a permanent thought, no.
So if I'm hearing the board right, the consensus of the board is in favor of this person in a position here for Harwich. Now, I want to give administration some clear direction, and if I understand, we are definitely more in favor of a consultant position than a part-time employee. Is that the consensus of the board? Megan, what would I, what would we need to do now to give clear direction to town administration to begin the process of creating, I believe, an RFP position?
What I would need is a clear scope of work, what it is you want this position to do, or this consultant to do. And you are right, this is not in the packet, but there is another document that has redline in it, which is this with my notes in it. And it is called something different, but what had originally come to you for a scope of service from another company, I would want to know if all of those things are what you are looking for this consultant to do. Do you want to include future design and consultant for the Great Sand Lakes, something that isn't going to even be designed? It's being designed now, but it won't be constructed until approval of funding, so that's a year, two years from now. So do you want to combine a scope of service for just the current active sewer projects? Or are you looking at the comprehensive wastewater management plan as well? Do you want to look at future? I just need to know what to request.
I would ask Select Board Member McCaswell, her's opinion on that.
I, Megan, outside of the redline, what you redlined is what I'd be looking for for a person to do. I think the focus would certainly be on current.
Current.
But I certainly, in my own sense, is that I don't have a problem with having an extra set of eyes and ears at meetings related to Great Sand Lakes and drainage. And, you know, like I said, if we get back something that makes no sense, or somebody wants to alter because they don't want to be involved in something that doesn't exist, or we don't think they have the knowledge of the project, then we deny it. But I, I think that list, it was a real combination from GHD and others, and I think it nails it for me. I don't think I would change it.
Pete, Don?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
So Megan, do you have enough to put together something for the board to take a look at and vote on? Because it would.
You, you don't have to vote on the RFP if you're going to vote on allowing us to create it or directing us to.
So that would be a vote, not a consensus of the board to move you forward?
If that's what you, if that's what you want to have done, is to have a consultant, you're basically hiring a consultant.
So that's a vote?
Yeah.
So we're moving to motion?
So the motion would get you to just putting it out there and sending it out to three or four or five different people?
And one thing you'd need to know is how are we funding it?
And then, so I guess that would be a question of whether or not this needs to come back. I would assume that this money is available in that, in these contracts. And I guess I shouldn't assume, but we do put contingencies in those contracts for a reason, and.
Sure.
So if the money is available, I would assume, I would like to see it funded out of what's already been appropriated by town meeting and not look for funds someplace else.
Okay.
And then, Megan, I would, I guess, rely on you, and maybe we, maybe we do, hate to even say it, but bring it back, with a scope of services.
Eight oh three, eight oh three PM, market.
Pay it back.
A scope of services that is payable out of that town meeting vote, because there may be things listed here that aren't part of that town meeting vote.
Sure.
So the scope of services, I don't think, can go beyond, or we will be looking for money.
So within the existing appropriation for Phase Three?
Yes.
I can find out about that, and I can develop a scope of services based on?
What that is. And then I would say that if there's any money left over in Phase Two, and any of this is from Phase Two, that wouldn't be terrible to look at that money either.
Okay.
So Megan, not to put you in a bind, but is this something that you can do for maybe not January 6th, but the next meeting?
I can have it ready for the 16th or the 13th?
I think we go 6th and then 13th. So the 13th, we can expect to have this. Anyone else?
No, that's good, I agree.
Thank you very much. We're going away. Yes, I do want to stop for a moment and give Don the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a real uplifting moment. Just received word during the select board meeting of the passing of Albert Ranio. I was extremely fond of Albert. He was an elder in the Cape Verdean community. It's, though it's a personal loss for me, it's an even greater loss for the town. I refer folks to the Harwich Hall of Fame presentation that was made this past May for more details about what kind of man he was. All I can say, he was a giant of Harwich, along with numerous other members of his family, including the former police chief John, his brother, and Angie Chilaca, his niece. He left a remarkable legacy for the town of Harwich, and we're all going to miss him.
Thank you, Don. Prayers with his name. Yeah, I hope Chelsea's okay. Okay, moving on to contracts. Megan?
Sure. The first contract you have in front of you is for a change order in the amount of $40,000 through Ty &amp; Bond for our local comprehensive plan. We had a contract, we have an existing contract with Ty &amp; Bond in the amount of $199,000. And it was for one year, two years. We are now at the end of that contract time, and they have more work to do on the plan. They're requesting a change order in the amount of $40,000 in order to finish the plan. I do know Sharon Rooney is in the audience today to answer any of your questions on that. The funding for this is through the finance committee's approval of a inter-fund transfer.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Sharon?
Only question I have is on page 155, effective date of original agreement, May 15, 2023. As you read down, when we get to the numbers, original contract amount, 199,000, change request, 40,000, 20%. Total new contract price, 139,000. I can't make the math work.
Typo. My fault. We'll get a, we'll get a new one.
Before we sign that, that would be a great change. And then, you know, where are we at? I mean, are we close?
Please, thank you.
Can we get a snapshot of how much more work needs to be done for $40,000?
Sure. Well, thanks. As, actually, as of today, I sent out a, an updated preliminary draft to the planning committee, and I understand you'll be, you and the planning board will be having a joint meeting next week on discussion on that and the housing production plan and the open space and recreation plan. So we're making really good progress. The committee's been working really hard. We've been working really hard to get that draft together, so I think we're, you know, we're in a good position to finish the plan by, I think we're looking for an extension of our agreement to the end of June, which would take us through spring town meeting, which is when we'd anticipate the plan would go before voters in the spring. So I think, yeah, we're making good progress, and I think it is achievable to meet that deadline, you know, with some work to be done, obviously, and some outreach yet to be conducted, but in pretty good shape.
Thank you, if I may. Talked about end of June for the contract, I get it. When do you think there'll be enough done where the public will get a snapshot? I've seen these things go to town meetings on short notice before, and even some on long notice before, and then they fail miserably. So how are we going to educate? How much time will we have to educate the public of what the document will be?
Well, so, so there is, so again, was sent out today, there is a working draft that has now goals, objectives, and proposed actions. So it's relatively complete in terms of a Word document, with one exception, that's a capital facilities and infrastructure component to the plan. I would hope that we could complete that, that last segment, within the next few weeks, month, hopefully, working with town staff, and have a full draft that's not formatted in a really nice, you know, pretty layout yet, but it would be, having the content would be available to the public in the next month to month and a half. After that, we would start to do the layout of the plan to make it more attractive for, you know, final adoption. That will take a little bit more time, but I would hope within another, you know, I think the committee is planning to do more significant outreach, starting in January, February, to the public's, you know, on the proposed actions in particular, and how those affect the public, so.
Thank you, and thank you for sitting through this meeting.
Sure, it's been interesting.
One of the last, through you, Mr. Chair to administration, can I ask that this draft be circulated to the board sooner rather than later? As great as it is to read these 300-page packets before the meeting, in a few days, I'd like some time to absorb what's in the draft plan, so.
I believe that's going to be circulated by staff, should be tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you, again.
Don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere. You can do that on New Year's Day, by the way. You're not, we have your car keys. I just want to get back to one sticking point that's pretty clear right now, is the housing production plan. I understand parts of this, but, and I'm not sure how you can fix it, but part of this seems like I'm back in the seventh grade, where as long as I spit back with my teacher said to me that I'm going to get an A. The state has a very tight template for this, I get that, but we have, I know we got seven villages, but we really have five distinct fields for the town. You sat through the discussion about the Baptist church. There are different things that are going on culturally, historically, in all of those towns, and the plan that we got doesn't reflect any of that, nor does it reflect where we would put certain things rather than other things in different villages. That's got to be addressed, because as Michael said, you show up at town meeting after this gets out there, say, in March, it's going to go down in flames. I will say, the one in 2000 was unanimously passed because we spent a year after sending it out to relevant boards to get feedback, and it came up with a document that was essentially the composite of everybody's input, not just from the local planning committee, but I mean, the actual bodies that had jurisdiction, Board of Health, Conservation Commission. So essentially, they were already bought in by the time the plan was put together, and it became an easy road. There have been problems in other areas where if people don't understand a regulatory document or a zoning document, one in doubt, vote it out. They just don't pass these things. So we have to be concerned about not only finishing it so that swages our concerns were, but it's got to get out there, like, really soon, really soon.
Yes, and so the housing production plan is, has been. Yes. And so the housing production plan is, has been completed or in, you know, pretty much final draft form. I understand that the planning board has approved it, but I understand that you are still-
Can't be final form if we don't agree with it.
Correct. It's not, it's not final, but it, that is one plan that we've also been working on and the open space and recreation plan in conjunction with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan goes beyond just the big A affordable housing and discusses things about village character and, you know, compatibility of housing with different, different villages. We understand that, and that's recognized in the comprehensive plan. So I think of the comprehensive plan as sort of more the umbrella. And the housing production plan, yes, it does have to follow certain standards for adoption by, approval by the state. But the comprehensive plan can go further than that and discuss and incorporate other issues into, into the housing question, if you will. So we hope it does that. It is in draft form. That's why we're, you know, looking for input from, from this board as well as, you know, further public input to in discussion about that.
But I'd just point out to you that the day after tomorrow, we're in 2025, we're in January. The warrant closes in February, and the town meeting is going to be when the town meeting is, in May. There is no time to really mess around with this. We need something that we can all wrap our arms around, like now.
Well, I think we'll be, we'll be starting that discussion next week and, and looking forward to what specific concerns you have with either the housing production plan or any, any of the plans in their draft form as they, as they stand right now. And I know the committee is really ready to engage other board and committees as well as the public. I think town staff has been involved in early drafts, but it is, again, it's an early draft. We're doing the best that we can to move it along as quickly as we can. And hopefully, you know, we'll be able to accomplish that in this timeframe that, that we're left with, so.
Don't want to beat a dead horse, but Michael's right about this. You can sell it to the staff, you can sell it to committees, but you need the public at town meeting to adopt this, or it doesn't go anywhere. So be mindful that it's got to start having, because you can't have workshops and public forums to discuss this unless there's a this to discuss. So time is of the essence here. We've already blown past, what, about five, six weeks since we said we weren't going to vote to approve the housing production plan? There is no answer for that. I'm just letting you know. There's an urgency to this. All the people you've talked about actually don't have an understanding of how these town meetings actually operate. That's kind of our bailiwick. Again, any confusion at all normally results in people withholding their vote.
Well, hopefully, a part of this, you know, rollout of the draft plan will include education information about what are, what are the roles of these different plans? What roles do they play? They do play different roles, you know, and, and different processes, so, yeah.
I bring this up reluctantly, but the plan actually means something, because the Cape Cod Commission generally relies on that about where the community wants to go. And one of the major kerfuffles over the last 10 years was that inadvertently the people of Dennis voted to more fully develop their industrial area, and that led to Lowe's Home Center making- and it was thrown back in their face that you folks talked about economic development in there. And my comment at that point in time is, I'll bet if this was a discussion at town meeting and you said, "We need you to vote for this to decide whether you want some big box stores in the area," that, that would have gone down in flames. So there's a little bit more caution that's going on, that these things actually mean something when it comes to developments of regional impact. And people understand that better now.
And they definitely do. They all, all three plans do play a role, particularly the, the comprehensive plan does. It's a master plan for the community, so it does carry weight in decision-making, so.
That's it.
We'll look for, we'll look forward to your review and comments starting next week.
Do not. I, I just have one, it's going to be a little longer than Don's.
We'll be back in about five minutes.
You mentioned that additional edits to the housing production, housing production plan will also incur costs that need to be funded. So the $40,000 doesn't get us to the finish line with these three, these three plans?
It does. It's, it's inclusive of the three plans, so we're, yeah, the open space and recreation plan needed some, some more work. If there are further edits to the housing production plan, those would be included. Everything is included in what we're seeking.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All good? All right, thank you, Michael.
I move that we approve a contract amendment with Ty &amp; Bond in the amount of $40,000 to complete the local comprehensive plan.
For whom to sign?
The board should sign it.
Okay, second.
Full signature.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post.
Three, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Letter B?
Okay, the next item you have is a contract, another contract with Ty &amp; Bond. This comes to you from our DPW director, Link Cooper, who unfortunately couldn't be here. He's on some well-deserved time off. Over the last year or so, we've been putting a lot of effort into the, the Fish Passage at Route 124. Further work is required to do more engineering and public outreach. This contract is in the amount of $198,095, and we are requesting it to come from Chapter 90 funds. And we also hope to apply for future grants that may cover this cost. But in case we do not have success in those grants, we need this money to complete this work.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I move that we approve a contract with Ty &amp; Bond Inc. in the amount of $198,095 for engineering services related to Head &amp; River Fish Passage on Route 124.
In a second. I'll second for discussion. Any discussion? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Just, it, it concerns me that we're dipping into Chapter 90, if only because we did not fund any roadwork through our capital plan last year here. And I'm just wondering what the implications are, you know, for making sure our roads are maintained. I get that he's recommending this, but I'd love to hear why. If there's anything that this would wind up kicking off, pushing down the road, literally and figuratively. So I'm a little, I'm real concerned about actually engaging in this without hearing that.
Anyone else? I'd like to hear from Link. So is this something we can bring back?
We can bring it back.
Let's bring it back.
Michael wants that.
I don't know how much road, road work we pushed off. We've got 1.2 million plus in that account.
Don't know.
It was recommended by the DPW director, so I would support his recommendation, but I don't think we have the votes for this, so. We'll wait.
I'd also like to hear how the projects, the rest of the project, what we're looking at going forward, so. I think we'll move, we'll move that one forward. Town administrators report?
Will you say we'll bring it back? Please, I'm sorry. Will you say we'll bring it back?
Just for Michael.
I'd like you to ask to bring it back.
Can we bring that back?
Yes, we can bring that back.
Okay, thank you.
Gosh, I love hearing that.
Okay, all right. So we have an announcement for a planning assistant hire. We have Ms. Meg Salmon, who has accepted an offer to be the next planning assistant for the Department of Planning and Community Development, which is wonderful. We have a signed contract for engineering related to the North Road flooding. This has been an ask for quite some time, so we have started the process of getting some engineering work to assess the wetlands and do some ecological improvement research in order to get this project to its next step, which was some solutions to the road flooding. We have a contract in your packet for the replacement of fence at the Senior Softball Field. This fence contract was previously signed with a different contractor, new generation. That contract we terminated for various reasons, but in all in all, we have a new contract that was approved for Reliable Fence Company of Cape Cod in the amount of $55,700. And I believe we had a question on this.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just had a quick question on the fencing there. Oh, excuse me, John Chori, Harwich Port. Just have a quick question. I know this is one of the most active recreation programs in town, the senior baseball. It supports hundreds of people. I read the warrant that was approved at town war, town, town meeting, and it calls for, like you said, the fencing, the gates, but also requested the backstop to be replaced. The contract that you approved did not include the backstop. And I was just wondering, is the backstop in good shape, or was this certainly not included in the contract? Because I have seen other contracts awarded that didn't, the town voted for something and it wasn't all done. So that's my question. Or is the backstop, or isn't the backstop, may not be needed, I don't know.
I will find out. I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, the town said they wanted the backstop, the gates, and the fencing, and I didn't see the price in there for the backstop.
I will find out the answer to that.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Suckman Howell, I believe you brought this up last week. I thought part of that originally was that fencing, the privacy fencing along that neighborhood on the opposite side of the ball field. That's supposed to be done as well?
Yes, it is. Just so everybody understands, because Michael, I queried Michael, I actually talked to Pete, because that goes back to a commitment we made in the early 2000s. That's kind of why we have to be careful about making commitments. But if you make a commitment to put a fence up and say, "We're going to keep a fence there," then when it starts to break down, it indeed is our problem. So I don't know how we're going to handle that, but Michael was right there. He came to Michael and I started digging into it, and we absolutely do own that problem.
We, we have the DPW director putting together, or one of his subordinates putting together, a scope of service to get that work out to bid.
I just wanted you to know that was the combined recollection of everybody. Yeah, we did make that promise.
We're aware of it, and we're, it's on the list.
Thank you, Michael.
Excellent, thank you. And then to John Chori's points, you'll, you'll get back to us on that, because it would seem we could maybe add that. But we can modify a contract if we need to.
Honestly, I don't know what it takes to put a backstop. Is that fencing? I don't know what that is, so.
It's a big, tall fence.
Find out.
Thank you, Megan.
I've hit over them before.
You're facing them. Megan, if I may?
Yes.
And I'm sure it's in here, and I'm sure I've missed it. Which, which are we, are we paying the $55,000?
Yes.
Okay, so that means we're getting the black vinyl galvanized.
Yes, we, we got the adult.
That's great.
Yes, we did.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. And John, we'll get back to you with your answer.
Again, John Chori, Harwich Port, and I believe this was a CPC-funded article, and the monies that, it's nice to see a contract won come in under, under, under bid, but unused money is returned back to CPC, correct? Not to general fund?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Another contract in your packet is for the replacement of carpeting here at Town Hall and the Community Center. This is from Article 10 of the 2018 annual town meeting.
I said, "Bring it back."
We have, we have purchased the tile, carpet tile separately, and this is for the installation, and we're hoping to have this done prior to the end of the fiscal year. And this contract is in the amount of $51,492, and it does close that article out with about $15,000 to spare. All right. One last thing, you had asked for an update on 246 Queen Anne Road sale. We have title work from the attorney, and we will bring that back for discussion at a, at a board meeting. There is an item that needs to be discussed.
Is work being worked on?
It is, yes.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Megan. All right, select board member report. Michael?
I have none.
Pete?
Just a reminder, I'd like to have the scope of services presented to us related to the individual who would conduct the finance director search. And, trying to read my notes, sorry. And the update on the community center fields insurance situation. So if we could have those on a future agenda, a near-future agenda.
Don?
Well, I alluded to this before, but I will ask the request once again. There had been two versions of the flagpole fund for affordable housing that had been floating around for about a decade and a half. It seemed to be okay that it was allocated by, it rolled over every year, and it was allocated by the select board. And then inexplicably, your finance director said that it doesn't get rolled over, it goes into free cash. And then about a week before she left, she said, "Oh, that's right, we did roll it over." So I'd like to know if there is that account and if, what kind of floating balance it has right now, because every year we used to vote to make that balance go over, to the extent that we didn't have anything ourselves, to the housing trust, number one. Number two, the roadway, I mean, this is getting old. The roadway in front of the Masonic Lodge, where we created a COVID situation, there's a huge sidewalk between the building and the curb. And all we asked for was somebody to look into the prospect of making a cutout there so we could have two parking spaces. In the ensuing period where we have been bringing it back with no result, they have lost the tenant in one of their buildings. And they will continue to lose the tenants if there's no way for them to park in front of the building. It's really difficult in the back to park, and people generally don't want to walk across the street. I just want somebody to ask the DPW director if it's a legitimate prospect of having the road layout go a little bit wider and paving it so that we could put à la Hyannis, two parking spaces there that are inset so that they're not going to mess up the truck pattern that we feel that we solved. But I need an answer. This has been months and months.
I'm going to piggyback on that if I may. I think, I think Pete actually asked for the grant.
If it was located, correct?
If it was located. So would you just look into that? It doesn't have to be tomorrow, but look into that and see if you can locate the grant and circulate that to the board, if you would? Because I think that was the, the, the last thing that we discussed when we walked away from this conversation, the last time. I think he would ask for the grant to see whether or not it's amenable in the timeframe or something like that.
Yeah, and I think Joe did allude to the fact that he doesn't believe, he believes we can do what we want within that area. However, I'm not sure they located the actual grant.
I still would like to see that, though, see what we're getting ourselves into.
Right.
But in no way was this directed at you at all, because I didn't ask you originally, so leave it at that.
And the only thing I'll say is I hope everybody had a happy holiday and happy new year. And thank you to this board and Megan and the people who stayed here long enough to make this a pleasurable evening for me.
Almost could have been next year. Second.
I know Mark Kelleher had a question about 5C Street.
I whispered in this here that it wasn't on the agenda.
Fantastic. It was in correspondence?
And that we would get it to them. So if the administration can send them what we're legally allowed to send.
Sorry to interrupt your motion to adjourn.
I do have a motion.
I did second it.
We have a motion, a second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.